Okay, hello everybody, welcome to first calculus two video. I'm gonna have like an intro at the beginning of all my videos that I started recording because all these things are posted on YouTube after and they'll be there for people to see. And they should be posted somehow in collaboration with Ress soon. So there will be there online afterwards these videos. Assuming they go well, assuming I can actually do calculus, so let's see. Today, we're gonna do some integration by parts mostly. And after, everything after that is not on the test, so tomorrow we have a test one, mini test one in calculus two, which is just 3.1, which is and integration by parts. See here, oh, can you hear me? I didn't bring the microphone close enough. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Sounds good, okay. Okay, so let me do the transition now. Hopefully, you'll notice pretty quickly, one second, there's a beautiful transition. Hopefully, you'll notice pretty quickly, um, we're, we're in 1080p now, we're in 1080p and 60fps. So hopefully it looks good, everybody, hopefully everybody can see that. I mean, it's kind of hard to see here, but yes, we're in 1080p 60fps. Also, it's purple on the bottom now. And if we're not doing physics, are we? So I didn't change that, let's, let's do that now. M T H two forty. Session one, six o'clock to, I'll just say seven thirty. It's whatever time really. Um, and these are not the topics we're doing, um, what's it called? Uh, in, in, integration by parts. And, uh, and also, uh, I'll also say it's like trig substitution. Sub. Sti. Substitution, I know I should have done this before we started, but okay, we're here now. Um, and now that's too big. Let's see if I can fix that. Wow, that's way too big now. Okay, what if I put a bunch of spaces there? Much better. Okay, I'll have to figure that out for next time, what did I just do? Okay. Anyways, let's just keep going, so I'll leave that off. Um, so yeah, today we're gonna start with integration by parts, so, um, I have these notes that I've been typing, so if anybody wants access to this, I'll post this after, right? So this is my integration by parts note, so I'll just go through it quickly. And, uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's nothing that you haven't seen before, right? So but it's, it's, uh, just how I'm gonna do it, right? So okay, so let's start with here, so integration by parts is, is one of the, is the first integration method that we're doing in the course. Um, I'm assuming by now you know how to do it, but let's, let's just go through it. Um, you know what, I'll do actually properly here. Uh, let me see, uh, so, uh, one, no, not 141 group, study groups. And new page, close. Okay, so. Um. M T H two forty. So if you're integrating something like this, right? If you're integrating something that has, um, two parts to it, right? Uh, let's say x cos x or x sin x, right? Um, we don't really have a good way of doing it without integration by parts. So what you have to do is you have to find some sort of formula that includes some, somewhere where you integrate two functions, f of x and g of x, right? And so this is the, uh, d x, this is the formula that we use, right? So I'll just write the formula, right? So the formula is, is, um, the integral of f of x, uh, f of x, g prime of x, d x equals, and I'm gonna leave off the of x's because everything's of, of x, so f g minus integral of, um, uh, g f prime, d x, right? And so this is a formula that we have, the integration by parts formula, right? And what it does is it lets you integrate a product, right? So a product of functions that you see here, one of them you just call f of x and one of them you call g prime of x. Well, you can break that down into this, right? You can break that down to this. Now, it's more how I usually look at it, right? Which is a little bit more common, is you're integrating, um, you just say u equals f of x and v equals g of x, right? So you would write it like this, uh, u d v equals u v minus integral of v d u. And I'm going to make sure I got that right by looking at here. U d v, v d u, u v, u d v is here, u d v, yeah, right? So if I have, for example, my function up there, which was x sin x, well, I can integrate this now using this formula. Um, and, and so the, the formula, it doesn't actually fully integrate it, right? Because we still have an integral, but the goal is that this integral is simpler, right? It's simpler there, right? The integral of just the function g, um, yeah, so, so you notice we need the antiderivative of this one to get just g, and then we need the derivative of this one to go here, right? So, um, what we do is, okay, so well, well, like I said, I need the, uh, so how, how, let's just like plug it in how the formula says. So if this x is my f of x, so then I, this is equal to x, g, so this is my g prime, so I need the antiderivative of this. The antiderivative of sin x is negative cos x. So negative cos x minus the integral of g f prime. So g, we already calculated that, g was negative cos x, so negative cos x. And then f prime is the derivative of this one here, we call that our f of x. So the derivative of that is one. Negatives here will cancel out like that. And you can see this is a lot simpler to, to, uh, integrate now, right? The integral of, uh, a cos x is just sin x. And there's our integral. Now, there is a more standard way of doing it, now this is, I'm trying to give you like a little bit of a, 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 to understand what you're actually doing, not just like making up u and v out of nowhere. Because that's kind of what it felt like to me, is you just pretend, like you're just making up u and v out of nowhere. They represent actual functions of what you're doing in these specific, specific places. But there is like a, a way that is more commonly done to do this, right? To actually do it, so let me write it again, x sin x d x. You call one function u and you want, call one function d v, which is secretly our f of x and our g prime of x, right? So what I'll call this one u, right? U is the one that you're taking the derivative of. And what's always important is that when you take the derivative, when you, when you choose which one that you're gonna take the derivative of, it has to get simpler when you take the derivative, right? And you definitely can't get more complicated, because then it's not useful. And then the other one, well, it has to include d x in it, right? And then because, because this is g prime with, like, it's the derivative of g with respect to x, so you have to have a d x in there, right? And then it's just gonna be the other thing that's there. So here you take the derivative, d u equals d x. And if that's confusing to a lot of people, like, I understand why this would be confusing. So you can think of it like d u by d x equals one, and you multiply both sides by d x. And now you have d u equals d x. It's just that this is typically done in one step instead of two. And then here we take the antiderivative for d v, so the antiderivative of sin x, um, is negative cos x. So v equals negative cosine of x. So now we can plug this into our formula, like I said before, it was u v minus v d u. So, um, u, v minus the integral of v, um, v is negative cos x. D u is just d x, right? And we're back to where we saw, what, what the answer is from before. Cos x, uh, so that, that's, uh, plus the integral of cos x d x. So this is gonna be negative x cos x, uh, the derivative of, uh, the antiderivative of cos x is sin x. And there's our answer, and just make sure that's the same answer we got before, negative cos x plus sin x plus c, negative cos x plus sin x plus c, yep. So there we go. So the reason I did it twice is because, um, this section, right, above here, this is like more thinking about it like with functions, right? This is like the function, f of x times the function g prime of x, and you need to get this like this, right? You need to get in this form. Then if you want to, but what's more typically done is you just choose a u and a v, right? These are the intermediate variables, is what they're called, right? The intermediate functions, um, they're functions of x, they're functions of x, right? But you just call them u and v. Um, and so you choose those and then you take the derivative and antiderivative and then you plug it into the formula like that, you get the same answer. Right, and it's, it's a lot less cumbersome to do it like this, this is typically, you need a way to do it. Uh, let's take a minute to figure out where we get the formula from. I'm sure maybe your teacher did it, right? But let's take a moment to figure out where we get the formula from, why, why is this what works, right? Why is the, uh, uh, let's, let's actually do it with the functions, let's do it with the functions here. So the formula, remember, our goal is to say the integral of f of x times g prime of x, d x is equal to f of x times g of x minus the integral of v d u. So g of x, I guess I'll write like this, f prime of x, um, g of x, d x, right? So let's see how we get this. Well, if we were to, um, if we have a product of functions, just a product of functions, let's say we have f of x times g of x, right? So let's say, um, um, how should I do it? Let me look at my thing for a second here. How did I do it up here? I did it over here, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. D by, yeah, yeah, okay. So if I have a product of functions, yeah, okay, f of x times g of x, right? And I want, and I take the derivative of this, right? So I say d, oops, d by d x times this, should have the chat open too, let me just open the chat here, so that we see it. Let's see here. So discussion chat is where you can talk to me, I'll leave it open here. So, uh, if we have, if we have a product of functions, f of x times g, uh, f of x times g of x, and we take the derivative, well, just based on product rule, it's f of x times g prime of x, oops, plus, um, f prime of x times g of x, right? And so now, right, hopefully I did that, I'm doubting myself all of a sudden, but I think that, that should be right. Um, and now let's take this formula. Is it good? Someone gonna say something? Or someone just unmute by accident? Maybe one or the other, I don't know. Um, so now from here, let's integrate both sides, okay? Let's integrate both sides of this, so if I, if I integrate the left side and integrate the right side, right? Um, everything with respect to x, so I'll put d x, d x, d x everywhere. Well, um, one of the fundamental theorems of calculus, I forget which one, well, that says that the left side is just gonna be f of x, why am I in red? The left side is just gonna be f of x times g of x, right? The, uh, and the integral of the derivative is just the function. Because imagine you take the derivative of this and then take the integral, right? You would, you would just go back to where you started. And then the right side here, well, we have f of x, sorry, the integral of f of x times g prime of x, d x plus the integral of f prime of x times g of x, d x. And we can rearrange this, right? We can rearrange this for this term, this is the term we want, right? Or we could just as easily rearrange for this term, doesn't actually matter. Um, the point is, is that we want to know, we want to have a formula for integrating a product of two functions. So you can choose either of these, it's just that it's typically this one that's chosen, right? But it also doesn't particularly matter, because it doesn't matter what you call f of x and what you call g of x. But yeah, so typically this one's chosen and you just rearrange for that, and then you have a formula. You have a formula to integrate a product of functions, right? Because now I can, uh, just move, move this to the other side, so, and, and flip it around, so I'll have the integral of f of x, g prime of x, d x is equal to f of x times g of x uh, minus the integral of f prime of x times g of x, did I do that right? Yeah, I did that right. And there's our formula, right? And if we, again, if we, if we just call u equals f of x, oops, f of x, and, uh, v equals, uh, g of x, then this is the integral of u d v equals, um, sorry, that's a, that's a, not a negative integral, that's an f of x, right? So maybe I should write, I should write, f, that still looks like weird, but okay. Uh, uh, this is gonna be u v minus the integral of, uh, I'll say v d u. And that's the simpler form of the thing. So both of these are our integration by parts formulas. Yes, this is being recorded, yeah. So there we go, we have our two integration by parts, by, by parts formula, can't speak. Um, and so we can go from here, and what I want to mention is, I tried to wrap my head around this, thinking of it like it's the integral of u with respect to v, and I couldn't really wrap my head around it, I feel like you're not supposed to think of it like that, and I, I put that in my note here, right? Which I said down here, I said, which is not to be interpreted as the integral of u with respect to v, rather, it's just a way of remembering the formula when actually solving problems. For a better understanding, consider the equation, number one, because I, I don't think it make, I mean, I don't know, I might be wrong here, but I don't think it makes sense to say, because remember, v is a function of x, right? I said here, v is a function of x, v is g of x. So it doesn't make sense to say the derivative of u with respect to g of x. That doesn't, that just doesn't make, I don't, I don't know what that means, that, I don't, maybe, maybe I'm not thinking about it properly, but I just don't know what that means. So, um, this is d v here. So it's not, so you're not supposed to think of it like that, just think of it as this is the variable you're supposed to stick here, right? This is the variable you're supposed to stick here, that variable will contain a d x, uh, where are we? That variable will contain a d x, so you're still integrating with respect to x the whole time. It's just that the variable is called d v, d v at that point, right? And, yeah. Uh, one, one way to think about it too is, is how we get to this is because what you're saying is, d v itself doesn't really mean anything, what you're really saying is d v by d x. And if you're still integrating by d x, those cancel. Um, so that's kind of why you write it like this, but again, it doesn't actually really make sense to just say with respect to v. Um, so it's just a notation thing, this is just a notation thing. The actual, the actual calculus and math that's happening is this, right? This right here, that's the actual math that's happening. This, again, just a notation thing, a very helpful notation thing, but just a notation. Okay, um, so, okay, there's that explanation, did I miss anything from my note here? This is this, oh yeah, integrating by, uh, for a definite integral, all you have to do if you're integrating a definite integral, the only difference is, okay, of course you, you keep the bounds here, so if I, if I take this formula, I'll write it again. The integral from a to b of f of x times g prime of x, d x equals, um, f of x times g of x evaluated from a to b minus the integral from a to b of g of x, f prime of x, d x. And there we go, that's all it is, the only additional part is this, evaluate those functions from a to b. And so this will be a constant, right? This will be, if you evaluate from a to b, that's, that's just a constant, right? Assuming there's no other weird variable stuff happening, right? So you can just do that. Oh, I don't think we'll need microphone slash webcam for the test, no. Uh, no, we don't, it's, and so just not bipolar, so yeah. Um, so, the thing to notice here, right? Again, what I mentioned before is that the only reason this works, and the reason this is actually useful at all, is because f prime of x should be simpler than f of x, and g of x should be simpler than g prime of x, I'll use different colors, right? G prime of x should be simpler than g of x, sorry, other way around. G of x should be simpler than g prime of x, the whole point is that this, this is simpler. Right? So yeah, that's, that's, that's the whole point there. Um, and that's, that's why it works, so let's do some questions. Um, I can do a... Well, does anybody have any suggestions for questions? Uh, may as well do one, I'll just do one from Horowitz's lectures, I think I have, I have two, I'll do one definite and one indefinite, I guess. So, um, here's our example, this is the integral, um, from, uh, x, so I'll say lecture, lecture question from, uh, sorry, integral, so indefinite of x secant squared x d x, so I'm integrating this. Uh, we don't really have a method other than integration by parts, parts that works for this, right? So I will choose, um, I have to choose a u and a d v. So my u has to get simpler when I, when I take the derivative, right? Because I'm gonna take the derivative of u and I'm gonna integrate d v. So x gets simpler when I take the derivative, so I'm gonna choose that, and this has to include the d x, so, uh, I'll just put the secant squared x, right? Uh, I wouldn't put secant squared x here, because that doesn't get simpler when I take the derivative, this whole thing, that'll get much more complicated. This will get simpler though, this is gonna be d u equals d x, right? And v equals tan x. So the derivative of tan is secant squared, right? Well, now I can just plug it into my formula, so it's, it's gonna be u v, right? U v x, tan x, right? Minus the integral of v d u, right? So I'm gonna color this a little bit, integral of, oops, integral of v d u, like that. So v is tan x and d x here, and now we just have the integral of tan x d x, right? So, um, what is the integral of tan x d x? Um, he, he just wrote the answer, he didn't actually say how to do it. How would you do it without just knowing the answer of what the integral of tan x d x? So this is just x, tan x minus, okay, and so, without just knowing. Yeah, I don't know how you'd do it, did you do another integration by parts? Maybe you do another integration by parts. Uh, I don't know what the derivative of tan is though. I, I'm useless at remembering derivatives of trig functions, so give me one second, secant squared, yes, which is not simpler. Brings us in circles. Oh, and then you need to do a trig thing for secant squared, yeah, okay, so I think you're just supposed to know. Oh, yeah, you could do that, that's true, okay, let's do that. So this is, uh, this is sine x over cos x d x, I can just say, uh, u equals, yep, I can just say u equals cos x, d u. Uh, honestly, I wanna start using a different variable for u sub, so I'm gonna say t equals, um, because when you do integration by parts and u sub in the same question, it gets very confusing. So I'm gonna start saying, um, uh, for my u sub, it's gonna be t, I'll probably still call it u sub, but I'm gonna use the variable t. So t equals, uh, cos x, uh, d t, or maybe d, maybe t is a bad variable, because d t means something else, well, it doesn't mean something else, but you know, negative sine x d x, we're doing d t by d x. Um, so here I can, uh, plug that in, right? So it's going to be x, tan x minus the integral of one over t d t, right? Um, because, and it's actually plus, because that negative sign goes to the front, right? So now it's going to be x, tan x plus ln absolute value t plus c, x, tan x plus ln absolute value, we said t was cos x, cos x plus c. And that's not the answer that he has here, but I feel like that's right, we didn't make a mistake, did we? I, I have a feeling it's just the same, but just different. Yes, it is the same, is. Uh, because it's, it's the same, because, uh, what's in the textbook is, no, it's in textbook, what's in Horowitz's lectures is x, tan x plus, uh, sorry, minus ln, uh, secant x plus c. Um, it's just that secant x is cosine, uh, x to the power of negative one, and using, uh, um, what's it called, logarithm rules, the negative one can go to the front, and it's a plus, and there we go, we have our answer. So it's the same answer. Okay, there we go, so we integrated, you have to do, uh, integration by parts, and then you also have to do a u sub at the end. Next example will be a definite integral, right? So it's gonna be the integral from zero to three of ln x squared plus one, d x, okay? Well, so we only have one thing in here, right? We only have one item to, to, you know, that's here, so it's not actually even a product at this point. But you can still do it by parts, because you can kind of pretend like it is a product still. You can say you're multiplying by one, d x, and now it is a product, I mean, it's a very simple product, and it's not, it's kind of a useless product, but still is one. So we can still choose a u and a d v to help us here. D v has to contain d x, and u is gonna contain ln, um, x squared plus one. Now, the reason I do this is because when, when you take the derivative of this, it's gonna get changed, right? It's gonna become something different, and when you take the antiderivative of this, it's not gonna get more complicated, right? So when I take the derivative of this, it's gonna be d u equals, uh, so it's gonna be the derivative of the thing inside, two x, over the thing inside, right? Um, and this is gonna be v equals x. So I can plug it into the formula, u d v, right? So, sorry, u d v, but first is u v, so it's gonna be x, ln, x squared plus one, minus, uh, sorry, evaluated from zero to three, minus um, the, um, integral from zero to three of u d v, sorry, v d u. So that's x, uh, sorry, x squared, two x squared over, I'll put the two to the front, x squared plus one, yeah, d x. Okay, um, how do we integrate this now? Did I do something wrong? Do you know, that's right, that's right. Oh yeah, he did something weird with this one, I remember. Yes, he did do something weird with this one, two x, this one minus one. Okay. Someone's got their mic on, unless they're trying to say something, but it's just blurry, well, not blurry, but you know what I mean. So this is gonna be x squared, and the way that, because this is, this is kind of weird, right? So this is a weird thing to integrate, this is x squared here. Um, the way that Horowitz did it is you do x squared plus one minus one, okay? So we didn't change anything like that. This is now going to be x, ln, x squared plus one evaluated from zero to three, minus two times the integral from zero to three of x squared plus one over x squared plus one, d x, minus two times the integral evaluated from zero to three of x squared minus one uh, over x squared plus one, d x, no, that's not right, plus one, like that, yes, okay. That's what I meant to do. Sorry if I confused someone there, so I, I just took these first two terms from the top, and then the next one I put a minus one, right? But since, since the, the minus went to the front here, turned this into a plus. Okay, right, so there's that. Now we can integrate this, so ln, x squared plus one evaluated from zero to three, minus two times the integral of one, d x evaluated from zero to three, plus two times the integral from zero to three, oh, I guess, we can just take that, there's nothing else to do, except take the, um, take the, uh, antiderivative of this, so we can say for this one, I think we just do, no, we can't do, hold on. Oh yeah, I don't remember what this is, okay, so x squared plus one, the antiderivative of that is gonna be tan inverse, I'm quite certain, yes, it's gonna be tan inverse. Um, so that's just something to memorize, and I feel like those are actually pretty important to memorize, the inverse, um, formulas, but in general, it's gonna be one over x squared plus a squared, the, the integral of that is tan inverse of x over a. Okay? Um, which are, it's come up a few times this semester so far, honestly, uh, so I feel like that's good to know. So this antiderivative will be, uh, tan, so I'll do that, so tan inverse of x over one, so x that evaluated from zero to three. And finally, so this is going to be x, ln, x squared plus one, valued from zero to three, minus two x, that's evaluated from zero to three, plus two times tan inverse x evaluated from zero to three, uh, no, plus c, because we're doing a definite integral. And there we go, and so now we, uh, we just have to evaluate. Just make sure I got everything right, x, ln, x squared plus one, minus two x, plus two, tan inverse x, yep, everything's good. So now we, um, uh, we do the evaluation, so this is going to be, in this bracket, it's going to be, um, three ln, uh, nine plus one, right? Three squared is nine plus one, is gonna be ten, uh, minus zero, it's just zero, minus two times, evaluate three, evaluate zero, which is just three, plus two times, um, uh, tan inverse of three, minus tan inverse of zero, let's see if those things each exist, tan inverse of three will exist, and tan inverse of zero is zero. So it's just minus two, I mean, two times, um, tan inverse of three, uh, yeah. So this is just going to be three. So this is just going to be three lawn, ten. Minus six, plus two, tan inverse of three, is that as simple as he put it? Three lawn, ten minus six, plus two, tan inverse of three, yep. And that's the final answer. So there's that question. Now, I'm definitely doing the, the, like, the hardest questions here, this is not like a typical, uh, integration by parts question. Right, um, you usually don't have, I mean, it's kind of typical, I mean, you did integration by parts, and this isn't so weird to do, to put everything into U. And just have DV equals DX, that happens quite often. Right? And yeah, and just the thing to memorize is, is this note here. Um, again, that's come up like three or four times already, so. Guess it's good to know. Um, and yeah, there's that question. So does anybody have any questions about integration by parts? And does anybody want me to do any questions from the textbook?
Oh, wait, Adam, can you quickly scroll back up to that, that formula for a second?
Oh, for this one here, yeah.
Yeah.
Let me just, let me just make absolutely certain that that's not incorrect. Let's just say. Uh, ant, anti derivative, uh, oh, let's go to Wolfram Alpha. Wolfram Alpha. Um, integrate, um, what was it, integrate something over something, it was. One, X squared, plus, um, A squared DX. And hopefully it'll give tan inverse over A, oh, careful here, over A. It's not what he did with the other question one, yeah, that might be actually right, I mean, that's right, cuz that's what we're looking at, so this is obviously right. So I guess it's one over A times tan inverse, it's just that A was one, so it didn't matter. Let me check that in the textbook, so that we're not confused. Here. And I'm actually gonna go to the Calc one textbook, cuz that's where that was. So, this would be in integration, integration. Inverse trig. Yes, there we go. So it's, it's this rule right here. Uh, so potentially, all three of these are important, so I will take a screenshot of them. Because, again, this one's come up three times, three or four times, so these two might also come up, I just don't know. Um, we do have a method to do this now, I guess, right, because we have, um. Do we have a method to do that? How would I do this without this formula? Derivatives there, I could do. Okay, anyways, you know, uh, trigonometric substitution works too, right? But. Um, I don't know how exactly I feel it would work like this, I don't, we're, we're not there yet, but. Uh, so that's that, so yeah, take a, I'd say, I'd say give this a try, take this, but, you know, I mean, uh, I'd give this a try, but, um. Write that down. So, we have that, so there's our, that's, that's all, I, I was thinking of for integration by parts, again. If anybody wants me to do any more questions from the book, if not, I can move on to three point two, uh, just, that's not on the test. So. Depends on what people wanna do, I actually don't know if, if people would want me to continue with three point two stuff, or just wait till next week for that.
Is it, isn't it, is it not three point one and three point two on the?
I'm quite certain it's three point, just three point one, but now I'm not quite sure, so let's take a look.
Oh, it's just three point one.
Yeah.
Oh, interesting.
I'm gonna make absolutely certain. By looking here, mini test, mini test one, mini test one sections. Is three point one, yes, just three point.
Okay, sick.
Please work on some more deep three point one, please.
Uh, yeah, do you have any, do you have any suggestions? I can just keep doing questions from Horowitz's lectures too.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, okay. Um, so let's do a volume question, or a region. Yeah, let's do a volume question. So the question is, find the volume, so example. Volume. Uh, volume from lecture. Um, so this question is going to be, find, find. Volume of the region below. Y equals E to the negative X between zero and one, right, so X is between zero and one. Um, and it's rotated around the X axis, right, so rotated around the, sorry, the Y axis. Okay. So this is going to be, well, we have to draw our, you don't have to, but I like to draw it first, so there's our thing, I hate when it does that. Okay, so, uh, Y equals E to the negative X, that will look something about like this, right? E to the negative X, I think, hold on, is that right? Yes, I think that's right, yeah. So E to the negative X looks like that. We're going between zero and one, okay, the region below it is this region over here, right, this. Here, and we're gonna find the volume of that rotated around the Y axis, right? So I like to do, I like to do, uh, cylindrical shells, and that's pretty much always my go-to one, because I don't square anything. I think, okay, I, I always say, I think after that, I, I always forget what the formula is until I actually do it, so, okay, let's see, so. I were to take a, uh, arbitrary choice there, what would the radius be? What would the height be? Well, the height is E to the negative X, and the radius is just X. Radius is just X, that's right, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna integrate two pi from zero to one of X, E to the negative X DX. And that's gonna be our volume. Well, um. We could, couldn't I just say? Oh, that wouldn't help, yeah, okay, never mind. So integrating this, can we do a U sub? Well, not really. The derivative of E to the negative X is negative E to the negative X, that's not there, well, it is there, but. Wouldn't really help us, derivative of X. Is, um, one, but again, we just have a U there, so it's not actually helping us at all, doesn't go down in exponent. So, uh, we're gonna have to do integration by parts here, right, so I'm gonna say, choose something that goes down when we, the, the power goes down when we, um. I take the derivative of it. And, uh, our DV is going to be something that either gets simpler, or it doesn't change much, when you take the antiderivative of it. So, uh, U is going to be X, cuz that gets simpler when I take the derivative of it, so DU by DX is going to be, well. DU is gonna, is gonna be equal to DX, and V is gonna be E to the negative X DX. So V is negative E to the negative X, uh, just, that's it. Cuz if you take the derivative of that, you get that, yep, we're good. So, it's going to be two pi times UV, negative X, E to the negative X, evaluated from zero to one. Minus the integral of V D U, so E to the negative X, uh, DX. Uh, from zero to one. Well, we just did that antiderivative, so we know this now, two pi times negative X, E to the negative X evaluated from zero to one. Plus, negative E to the negative X evaluated from zero to one. Right? Um, and I can just evaluate both at zero and one, and then, so I can pretty much do that. Right, so now we just, um, evaluate, so two pi. Times, uh, do it at one. Yeah, okay, so at one, it's gonna be negative one, E to the negative one, so negative one over E. Um, plus, at one, it's going to be negative, so minus, minus. Okay, so it's going to be, um, we're subtracting the lower bound, the lower bound is gonna be negative, uh, one over E, so those will cancel, right? Um, nope, sorry, that's not right, never mind, sorry, we're not subtract, yeah, it confused me is that we're, uh. I did that thing with moving the, that, the, uh, evaluation to the outside, never mind, this is the first term. That's evaluated at one, yeah, that's evaluated at one. One, negative one, E to the negative one, E to the negative, negative E to the negative one. Yeah, so I can just say. You can just say minus E to, yeah, okay, that's good, and now from here. I subtract, that bracket doesn't need to be there, subtract, evaluated at zero, so evaluated zero, this term is zero, so it's just gonna be. Negative E to the zero, which is one. There we go. So, this is going to be two pi times negative two over E plus one. Right, so this is going to be, um, two pi minus four pi over E. And that's right. That's our volume. Two pi minus four pi over E. So there's that question. There was our volume question. Um. Is it the same question? Oh, it's the same question. He did it a couple ways, he did it once with, uh, he did it once with, um. Um, cylindrical shells and once with disks. Okay, let's do, um, let's do this one here, so, uh, here's another example from lecture, right, I'll call it. Double, so this is going to be, so I'm, I'm writing this up here to help me later on with, uh, knowing what question we're doing. Finding the volume is part of, of last chapter, like last, um, last course, I mean, but like, like, at the end of, uh, Calculus one. So no, it's not technically directly part of three point one, but it does have applications in there, and I'm pretty sure they could ask you to do it on the test. Not for sure, I don't know, I'm not, I don't wanna scare anybody, but, yes, it is quite possible that they do that.
Majed was telling me that, um. He said that they won't, but he seemed a bit unsure, so I don't know, he was like, oh, I don't know why they put the homework. If we're not asking you guys, but, I don't know, that being said, like, there usually can be some discrepancy.
Yeah, yeah, so I wouldn't say it's likely that they're gonna put it, yeah, and if, if Majed say, said, uh, that he seems like they're not gonna, so then, seems like they're not gonna. Okay, so then this question here is another integration by parts, because we don't have any, a substitution that we can do. If this was, uh, X squared up here, and that was that, then we could do a substitution, right? Um, but in this case, we can't, so what we have to do is an integration by parts, right, it's a product of functions, and so I have to choose one to be my func, what, to be my F of X, and one to be my G prime of X, so. Um, my U and my DV. Right, so my U again has to be something that gets simpler when I take the derivative, well, X squared gets simpler, the power goes down by one when I take the derivative. And DV has to be something that either gets simpler when I take the antiderivative, or it doesn't change much, well, that's exactly what E to the X is, so we're good. DU is gonna be two X DX, and V is E to the X. That's the whole point, this, this is the whole point of E to the X. Um, and so now. This is gonna be, if we plug it into our formula, again, good to remember, UV, it's the two, just, just the functions, X squared, E to the X. Um, which just coincidentally is the same thing in the thing here, not really coincidentally, but. For no, that's not, that doesn't always happen, obviously. Minus the integral of V D U, right, so then minus these two. So that's E to the X, uh, times two X DX. And I can just slightly rearrange this, move the two to the front, and move the X here, and we have the same thing, didn't change anything, just move stuff around. And as you can see, we have the same, like, we have, not, sorry, not the same, but we have something else that we can't integrate very easily, but it did get simpler. Right, the power went down. So we're on the right track, um, we're not quite at the answer yet, though, so what you gotta do is you gotta do integration by parts again, right? So again, we call U equals X, DV equals E to the X. DU equals DX, V, uh, sorry, DX, DV equals E to the X DX, um, and V equals E to the X. So once again, we integrate by parts. Uh, UV, X, E to the X, minus the integral of V D U, well, this is just E to the X DX, this we can integrate easily. Just by inspection, so X squared, E to the X, minus two X, E to the X, plus two, E to the X, plus C. And you can factor out E to the X if you really want to. X squared minus two X plus two, plus C. And there is our integral. Yeah, okay. Just looking at this next question, and I'm kind of confused. Sorry, I'm having a little brain moment, what's, what's the integral of lawn X? How would I, would I do integration by parts to do that?
Yeah.
Yes, I would do integration by parts to do that, okay, okay, good, yeah, I was trying to, like, it looked simple, I was like, I should be able to do that in my head, why am I not being able to do that in my head? Cuz it, it does, it takes integration by parts, okay, let's, let's do it, why not? Example, integral of lawn X DX. So for this, I'm gonna say U, I don't have anything here, I only have one thing, so that's gonna go in my U, right? Uh, lawn X and DU, uh, DV, sorry, DV is gonna be DX. So DU is gonna be one over X DX, and V equals X. Derivative of lawn, no, that's not right, the derivative of lawn X is not. No, the derivative of lawn X is one over X, yeah, never mind, that is right. Some reason this confuses me, for some reason, these, this step here with the lawn X, okay. Uh, so this is gonna be X lawn X, minus the integral of V D U, right, so X over X DX. Integral of one, so this is going to be X lawn X, minus X, plus C. Okay, there's the integral of lawn X. In other words, the derivative of this should give me lawn X, so always, always good to, to just check yourself on that, right? That this is an antiderivative, so the derivative of this should give us lawn X, whoa, what's the screen doing? That's weird. Um, let's check it, it should, right? And actually, we're gonna have a one, yeah, okay, so if I take the derivative of this, well, it's a product, it's gonna be the derivative of the first one, times the second one. Lawn X, plus the first one, times the derivative of the second one, and then we just wanna say, uh, we just wanna do the derivative of this one. Well, yeah, lawn X, plus one, minus one, lawn X. We get the derivative out of that. So just checking, this is just checking. By, by doing D by DX, right, just, just checking that, that is correct, we do get lawn X out. Okay. So. There are some other situations, so we saw the situation here where you have to do, uh, integration by parts sometimes multiple times, right? Um, specifically, if you have a situation like this, where you have a X to some power, and then something. Um, you might have to do it that many times, right, so here it was power of two, we had to do it twice, right? Especially if this is E to the X, or, um. A trig function would make you do that as well. I'm quite certain, a regular trig function. Why is there a gap here? Oh. Okay, um, let's take a look at some other questions I have here, that's not too difficult. This one is. This one's okay, doesn't take very long. Well, I see one on my page that just takes up a lot of space, so it might be worth it, oh, no, it's not worth it. Uh, it's just one where you do it three times, instead of once, I mean, instead of twice, you know, it's, that's all it is. Um, let's see this. Okay, let's try this one, uh, another example. Example, from lecture. Lecture, there we go, so the integral of cos of lawn X DX. So, um, this isn't cos times lawn X, right, this is cos of lawn X. So we only have one thing in here, we gotta put that in our U, well, you don't actually technically have to put it in your U, but it, it wouldn't really do anything. Wouldn't simplify if you took the antiderivative, so let's take the derivative of cos lawn X, and DV. Will just be DX. Right? Okay, so du, uh the derivative of this is gonna be the derivative of the outside function, negative uh negative sign. Of ln x over the derivative of the inside function. I mean, sorry, time times the derivative of the inside function, which in this case is one over x. And in this case, v equals x. So next, plugging in our formula, you have x cos ln x minus the integral of um v du. So it's going to be plus sine of ln x, right? Yeah, sine of ln x. Okay, uh dx. This, it didn't get simpler. Right, this, this, and this, just as hard to integrate, we just have an extra term here in the front. Um but let's keep going. Because something's gonna happen when I go to the next part here, right? So if I were to integrate by parts again, so it's going to be x cos ln x plus. Uh and now integrate by parts again here, we'll say u equals sine ln x. Uh and dv equals dx, then du equals, once again, it's going to be cos of the the derivative of the outer function. Uh evaluated at the same inner function times the derivative of the inner function over x, v equals x. And if we put that in here, we're adding uv, so x sine x or sorry, x sine ln x. Minus the integral of v du, that's cos ln x dx, so sorry, I'm getting a little squished there, but hopefully you can still make it out. And let me simplify a little bit. So I'll write it over here, so x cos ln x plus x sine. ln x. Uh minus uh the integral of cos ln x dx, so I just got rid of some brackets, that's all I did. Well, yeah, okay, we were back to where we started, though, notice, right? So that integral that we have at the end there is the question. And all these lines are equal to that integral, right? We don't use that equation sign lightly, right? These lines are equal. Well, we don't actually have to solve for the integral. You just rearrange, right, move, add the integral of cos ln x to both sides, it's gonna be two integral cos ln x dx. Equals x cos ln x plus um x sine ln x, right? Um technically plus c. Right, and now we just divide both sides by two, so it's gonna be the integral of cos ln x dx. Equals one half x cos ln x plus one half x sine. ln x plus c. And there's your answer, there's your answer, there's your uh, there's your integral. We have, like, we didn't actually integrate, really, anything, like, we integrated, but we did integrate, but not like. Just taking the integral of something by just inspection at the end, right, that's kind of what you do usually, is you just see something that's simple. We didn't, we never got to that, but we still solved, because we just rearranged, we we, you know, these derivatives and these uh integrals of the trig functions, of sine and cos in particular. Are like cyclical, right, they go in a circle eventually, and so you can use that here in this case to find the derivative, find the integral, I mean. Of this function without actually finding the integral of this function. Right? Uh I I'm planning, I guess, till seven thirty, but if people have more questions, I'll just keep going, not really anytime. No time in particular, usually I have the scrolling text, but for people who are here right at the beginning saw that I didn't do it properly and it was getting weird, so. Yes, five billion hours, that's actually the correct one, yeah, until, you know, many, many, many years from now. So this is the integral for cos ln x dx, right? And yeah, so any questions about this question? Any questions about this question? Of course, let me know, happy to answer. And this definitely could happen again, this is pretty much the last complication. That I can think of at least. Okay, we did that one, we did that one, we did that one. We didn't do that one, okay, I guess I'll do that one. Questions, nope. Okay, I see one that's good to do. I pretty much only have two more questions from Horace's lecture, so we may as well do the two more. Example um from uh from lecture. Right, so what if I have this integral, t cubed e to the t squared dt, uh that's it, that's e there, e to the t squared, so. Um let's e to the t squared. Okay. Well, let's try, if I saw this, I would try to say, okay, let's do um u equals t to the power three. Uh dv equals e to the t squared, I would do that, right? Just to, cause I mean, usually you separate things part by part, I mean, you can kind of see what I'm getting at here, but. So du by dt is going to be three t squared dt. And v is going to be, well, what's the anti-derivative of e to the t squared, well, it's gonna have have to have an e to the t squared. Um if I were to take this derivative, I would have a, oh, it's gonna be complicated, e to the t squared. Okay, this anti-derivative. Oh, how do I do that? E to the t squared dt. Um. Well, it's a, again, it has to have an e to the t squared. Can't do any kind of use of. I don't know, I don't know what the anti-derivative of this is, let's see, is this here? Um. Oh, okay, so that's the kind of the point of the question, actually, nevermind, that's kind of the point of the question, is if you try to do the standard method. Uh it's too complicated, you can't do this integral, right? And especially this is gonna get more complicated, it's not gonna get simpler, right? The anti-derivative of that, it's not, it's not gonna get simpler. So this was the wrong, the wrong thing, substitution to do, the wrong uh integration by parts to do, so let's let's try again. Right, and I'll go for the correct method this time. So the correct one to do. Is one that's not very obvious, I don't think it's very obvious, right? Um and so the integral, I'll write it again, so the integral of t cubed e to the t squared dt. So you don't have to choose all of these, right, you don't have to choose all of these. If we had a t here, if we had a t here, it would be a lot simpler, you could just do a u sub at that point. Right, you could just do a u sub, so let's include a t there, this is just t squared, and this is t e to the t squared dt. Well, now du equals um two t dt. V equals, okay, this is possible, integral of uh e to the t squared times t dt. Well, I can say, uh uh t, well, can't say t now. Um give me a letter, j, no, I can't write j's. Y, no, y is not a good one either. What random letter, look at my keyboard, can't do k's, of course, k is c, I'll say c. C equals um uh t squared, so dc equals two t dt, right? Okay, so then v equals one half uh the integral of e to the c, d c? Okay, um and so that's going to be one half e to the c plus, well, plus c, but we don't really care, it's okay. Um and then that's going to be one half e to the t squared. Okay, we're good. So the derivative of this correctly uh is going to be this, right, so that's uh, it's gonna be that, no, it's not gonna be that, it's going to be. This there, sorry, I lost where I was on the page, this, right, so that's our v. So just to make things clear, that's our v, it took a little, a few steps to get v, but we still got v, that's du, that's u, that's dv. This is just all to find v. Okay, so now we can say uh one half t squared e to the t squared minus the integral of v du. So one half, uh well, the two from the du comes there so as well, so it's it's gone, e to the t squared times t dt. Yes, and we just did this integral, right? So we know this is one half t squared e to the t squared minus that integral, one half e to the t squared plus c. Right, and there, that's the answer, hopefully, let's see. One half t squared e to the t squared minus one half e to the t squared plus c, yep, there we go. So how does everybody feel about that?
How do we know when to do it?
When to only take certain bits, like a certain, well, when when you try other ways and you're not getting anywhere, I guess.
Okay.
Cause usually it's gonna be pretty simple, usually it's gonna be like, just you try integration by parts and, okay, maybe you try, like, one way doesn't work, try another way, maybe another way will be pretty obvious. Um and if that doesn't work, then you have to start thinking about how you can break up the powers and which way would be useful, cause, cause here I saw, well, I was, you know, when I tried to integrate this. Well, I could, I noticed I could just do a u sub if there was a t here, right, if there was a t there, so I can do that, right? I can, I can do that, cause I can pull one of the t's from the t cubed.
Wouldn't it have just been more efficient to switch up, like, split up the t cubed into t squared and then uh t dt? And then you would just have u.
U equals t squared?
Yeah, and then you would do the u dv thing, but for u, basically.
Well, yeah, it would just be, yeah, 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 it would just be, it's still have to do one integration by parts, but.
Yeah, alright, thanks.
That would work too, so just to repeat what he's saying there, um you could, you could have also done it like this, t squared e to the t squared t dt, right? At this point, we could just say u equals t squared, du equals two t dt. Well, look at that, one half integral u e to the u du. That you can just do with integration by parts. Right, so that's just another way to do it. I did that kind of fast, so if someone's confused by that, let me know, but. Can everybody notice the difference with like ten eighty P sixty FPS, can everybody see that it's better? Hope so.
Yep.
Looks looks nicer.
You paid for it?
Yeah, Discord Nitro, Discord Nitro.
Oh.
I mean, it's worth it considering I livestream enough, right, so.
Yeah.
If it makes a difference, of course. Right? Okay, um so yeah, someone suggested a question in the chat, so let's go for it. Um it's the integral of um negative, well, move the negative two right away to the front, well, okay. I guess I'll do the next step, negative two xe to the negative three x dx evaluated from one quarter to three, okay. So um let's see, I'm gonna move the negative two to the front, of course. So yeah, we just have xe to the negative three x dx. Well, I will try u equals x, dv equals um e to the negative three x, uh dx. Uh du will be dx and v will be negative one third. E to the negative three x, take the derivative of this, it's going to be that times negative three, yep, that's good. So this will be.
How'd you get negative one third, sorry?
Well, the anti-derivative of this, going backwards, right, and so I I have to put, so if if I take the derivative, let's think of it like this. I'm taking an anti-derivative here of an exponential function, so the final result has to have e to the negative three x in there, right? But if I just take the derivative of this, I'm gonna get um negative three times e to the negative three x, right? Because I have to take the derivative of the of the upper function, so I gotta cancel that out some hair, some 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 hair somehow. So I multiply by negative a third in the front, and that'll cancel that. So when I take this derivative, it'll be negative one third times negative three times e to the negative three x, these cancel. We're just left with e to the negative three x. TX. So that's kind of more like, this, I don't, I don't, there might be a rule, uh just a formula you can follow, probably not that hard to come up with. But, yeah. I'm I'm actually, actually, it's really not that hard to come up with, if we just say, uh if we just say um. Uh de to the negative, uh de to the u by dx, well, you would just say this is e to the u. Um times. Um du by dx. Yeah, which I'll just call u prime, right, times u prime, it's just a chain rule, it's just a chain rule. So if I were to be uh integrating, right, if I integrate both sides here. Let me see, no, that doesn't make sense. E to the u is equal to integral. Yeah, so you can, you can just say the integral of e to the u dx is equal to. E to the u times one over u. So long as u is not a function, so you, so long as u is a, is a constant. That should work, I think, I I'm making this up on the spot, so I don't know if this is actually right, but that that should work. Yeah, as long as u is a constant.
It should be u prime, because.
Yes, you're right. You're right, u prime, so long as. U prime is a constant, or I can just say u prime e bar. So there you go. Yeah. So uh carrying on with this question, we're gonna inter, this is gonna be negative two times uv. So negative a third x e to the negative three x evaluated from zero, sorry, evaluated from one quarter to three. Minus the integral of v du, so it's gonna be plus a third the integral of e to the negative three x dx, like that. Okay, um I can't, sorry, evaluated from a quarter to three. So I can uh um don't really wanna multiply in. Don't really wanna multiply in, so I'm just gonna say negative a third x e to the negative three x plus one third. And I, like I just said over here, right, we already integrated e to the uh negative three x, that's negative a third e to the negative three x. So plus a third times negative a third e to the negative three, negative three x, sorry. Uh no dx, close that, just evaluate, well, evaluate all of this now. From a quarter to three. So negative two times negative a third x e to the negative three x, multiply that together, it's. Sorry, it's going to be negative one over nine e to the negative three x. Um close, evaluate, one quarter to three. So negative two times, I'm just gonna plug the whole into my calculator, honestly. Can't see anything, the light's off. Okay, uh so negative two times uh something minus something, the first something is negative a third, should have a, should have a uh. Uh calculator cam. It's e to the negative three. That, oh, it's gonna be a lot of typing for this one, one over nine. E to the negative three bracket. Okay, and then the first thing is gonna be a three in all these spots. Okay, and then this is going to be negative one third times a quarter. E to the negative three times a quarter. Um. Ooh, what's that doing? That doesn't make sense, okay, minus a ninth. Okay, minus a ninth. Times. E to the negative three times a quarter. And I get what you said in the chat. So this is equal to. Negative zero point one eight three four, well, approximately equal to. Negative zero point one eight three four. Doesn't give me anything. Exact, I mean, we could, we could actually work it out, exact. It's a little bit more work than I'd like to do, but yeah. So that's that. Um any questions about this one? Okay, I think we're good. So there's that. Let's just make sure we did everything here. Okay. The first step, yeah. Um which starts here, I'll just say this is, should have said it before, but this is question from chat. Okay. So uh no problem, no problem. So first step, okay, I assume other than, other than taking the negative two out. So the first step of the, well, I integrated by parts, right, that's that's pretty much what it is. So I saw that I have something that gets simpler when I take the derivative and something that doesn't change too much when I take the anti-derivative. Uh it's only off by a constant, so it doesn't change that much. And constants are linear, so they they do, they come out, right? So I chose that for my U. And I chose that for my DV. Uh I took the anti-derivative using not that rule, but using this beautiful rule that I. Uh proved and meticulously uh studied for many years. Um and came up with right now, so there you go. And then I did that, so to integrate E to the negative three X, or in other words, E to the U where U is negative three X. So um. Uh I did that here, so I just have uh UV, right? So UV is X times negative one over three E to the negative three X. That's negative one over three X E to the negative three X. Evaluated from the bounds. Plus um the integral of VDU. Sorry, minus the integral of VDU. Uh which turns into a plus because of that negative sign, one third moves to the front. And all that's left is. Sorry, VDU, sorry, I was looking at the wrong thing, VDU is is that. Uh E to the negative three X uh DX, right, cause DU is just DX. Okay, and then um I integrate that because that's the same integral that we just did here, uh sorry, here, it's the exact same integral. And I just evaluate everything from uh one quarter to three. And I get that answer. Math labs are not mandatory. Assuming that person's in this call. Um I can't see them, so I guess not. So that wasn't a question for me. This rule here, no, I don't, I never seen it before. It's just like how you would do it. You can also, so a better way to think about it actually. Is is to just actually call it a use up when it's a use up. E to the negative three X DX, you just say U equals uh negative three X. DU equals negative three DX. So you can just say negative three integral E to the U uh DU. Right? Negative three E to the U plus C, negative three E to the negative three X uh neg- Negative three X plus C, yep. And there we go. It's just a use up, it's just I was, I guess I was over more, like I was complicating it. More. Right? So that's all it is. You can think of it like how I wrote this here. The integral of E to the U is E to the U times one over U prime, so long as U prime is a uh just a constant, but it's just a use up I'm doing. To get that. Plus C. Okay, I will keep going if nobody has anything else. Um so. There is another. Integral, the integral from zero to one of tan inverse X DX. Okay, integral from zero to one of tan inverse X DX. So first of all, just to integrate this is a little complicated, right? But let's give it a try, so if I say here. Um U equals tan inverse X uh DV equals DX, so then I'll say uh DU. Well, now what's the invert, what's the? Um what's it called, what's the derivative of tan inverse X? I would not know it off the bat, but I have the answer in front of me, so that's why I know it, it's one over X squared, one over one plus X squared. Okay? Um which comes from the rule that I said earlier. Well, I didn't say it, but comes from the rule from the textbook from earlier. Right? So that the integral, integral of this middle one, if you were to integrate that, it would be A squared plus U squared, right? A squared plus U squared, so one squared plus X squared, you would just say it's, okay, well, it's it's flipped around, you don't want the Xs to be that, so flip it around. But anyways, it's gonna be one over, it would be. Using this specific rule, if I wanted to integrate one over X squared plus one DX. That would be, so this right here, it would be uh one over one. Tan inverse X over one plus C, which again is is just tan inverse X. So this in fact is the derivative of tan inverse, right? Um and then, so we can see that here, right, so then I'm gonna. Use that uh for my use up, let's all get rid of this. Um so. We can. Continue with this question here, okay, so U equals tan inverse X DV equals DX, so DU is one plus X squared, V equals X. I can't get rid of this for some reason, it's not letting me pick it up. There we go. So I'll move it here. It's lagging so much. Um okay, then we can integrate, so it's going to be X. Tan inverse X evaluated from zero to one. Minus the integral from zero to one of VDU, so it's gonna be X over one plus X squared DX. Um this is just a use up here now, right? So we can just say, and again, I don't wanna use U, so I'm gonna say T equals uh X squared plus one. Uh DT equals two X uh DX. So it's going to be X. Tan inverse X evaluated from zero to one minus um the integral from zero to one of. One half. Um X DX DT, so it's going to be one over T DT. One over T DT. So X. Tan inverse X integrated from zero to one minus one half, uh we don't have to do that, so it's gonna be minus one half. ln absolute value T plus, no plus C. Definite integral. And uh one last thing is just sub the T back in, so it's going to be X squared. Tan inverse X evaluated from zero to one minus a half. ln absolute value X squared plus one. Um uh evaluated from zero to one. Uh the absolute value doesn't matter. Uh because X squared plus one is always positive. Um if you imagine the parabola, right?
Uh where do you leave the X squared? At the front. Last line.
Yeah, that's, I don't know why it's squared, yeah. No answer for that one, yeah. Thank you for catching it. Um so now I can evaluate both of them at the same time. Uh so evaluate that from zero to one, so this is going to be um evaluated at one, it's going to be tan inverse of one. So first of all, it's tan inverse of one minus one half. ln two. ln two. Right? One squared is one, plus one is two, so ln two, okay? Minus evaluated zero, this goes away. Um mine, and so uh one half. So plus one half ln. ln one. ln one and zero. E to what power is one and zero, yeah, so that's just that. So there we go. So this is. Tan inverse one minus one half ln two. Um and there you go, is that the answer? Oh, a tan inverse one has a nice, has a nice solution. Tan inverse one is apparently pi over four. So I assumed it wouldn't, but it does, pi over four minus one half. ln two, and there you go. There's your definite integral. Okay, so. There's that. Find the volume of the region, okay, we, I think we, let me just like go one by one, but I think we've done every question from Horace's lectures, okay? I just saw one we didn't do, but it's okay, so we don't have to do the first one, first one's too simple. Um that one's also too simple, the one that I said we did, that one we don't, that one we did, that one we did, that one we did. Just did that one, just did that one. That one. Did that one, yep, we did all of them from Horace's lectures. Okay. So there's that, so. Anybody got any suggestions or textbook questions you want me to do? Um or I can do some of the lab questions, if someone wants me to do that? Anybody, have you got any suggestions? Okay. I'll wait a minute, but if there's no other questions, then it's seven thirty, that's 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 how long I was planning on going for, so. Uh but of course, if anybody has any other questions, then just let me know, I'll do them. This three point one again is everything that's on the test. Um. Uh so everybody here, just remember, if you're, if you're gonna get going, then uh I do, I'm gonna do these every Thursday at six o'clock. For the test, for the content regarding the test of the following day, so. Uh every Thursday at six o'clock. It's here, um and they'll all be recorded always and posted on YouTube. Um and you can see it like that, so yeah. Otherwise, that's, then that's everything, nobody has any questions? I'll stick around for.
Yeah, just post the one, can, can we do that real quick?
Which one?
In the chat.
Ah, yes, okay. Well, let's see, let's see if I can do it. So I'll say chat.
It looks pretty messy, so.
Quest John. Um so, integrate X to the power seven root. Okay, five plus three X to the four DX, are we supposed to be able to do this with integration by parts, first of all? I think so. Um I assume that's why someone's putting in the chat.
Yeah. Yeah, it seems like it is, I have this answer sheet.
Okay. So let's try to see what we're gonna do here, okay, so we're supposed to do integration by parts. If I stick the whole thing in, no, that won't do anything. I can, I can of course put this in now, I I can, I can do this, okay, U equals X to the seven. DV equals square root of five plus three X to the four. The thing with that. Is I have to take this anti-derivative, and how would I take that anti-derivative? Well, I could. How would I take that anti-derivative? Can't take a, of course can't take a U substitution. Um oh, I might.
Couldn't, couldn't you just take uh the square root of five plus three X to the four as U and then just uh diff- uh get the derivative of that?
Uh like, like this U, or you mean a use up to solve this?
No, no, like um square root of five plus three uh X to the four, couldn't we use that as our U for uh integration by parts?
Okay, let's try it, yeah. Sure, so uh square root of five plus three X to the four, uh DV equals X to the seven DX. So now I can differentiate this, right, so the derivative of the outside, so I'll just. To the one half, so the derivative of the outside is going to be one half times uh lower the, lower the exponent by one, so it's going to be. One over two times the square root of five plus three X to the four. Times the derivative of the inside, which is going to be twelve X cubed. Okay, that's DU by DX. And this is going to be uh one eighth X to the eight. Okay? So now I can uh do the formula, right, so it's going to be. One eighth X to the eight. Uh times five plus three X to the four to the one half, okay? Minus the integral of VDU, so one over eight. Nope, I'm gonna pull out a couple more numbers from there. Uh this will simplify to six there, uh so it's going to be uh three over four. Uh X to the power of eleven over the square root of five plus three X to the four DX. Well, is this any simpler? And no, that's not any simpler. Uh in fact, notably. Exponent went up. Exponent went up and that's in the denominator now. Uh maybe actually could have seen that coming, cause of course the exponent would go up because we're integrating X to the seven. So. Yeah, that's not gonna, I I don't know how to integrate that, so I can't do that.
Okay, it started with splitting the X to the seven into X to the four and X to the three.
X to the four and X to the three, okay, let's start with that then. Okay. So you have the full solution for it?
Yeah, I have a full solution, just, I'm trying to look at something, it might not hundred percent be integrated by parts now that I look at it, but I'm just like checking information.
Mm-hmm, well, I think that last one that we did there at the end, it's possible that that would be a trig substitution one, I forget what was actually written there. Um no, that wouldn't be a trig substitution. I don't, I haven't done any trig substitution practice yet, so I don't actually know what I'm talking about really, but yeah. Um so if I do this. Then. Oh, okay, then I can say U equals, yep, this'll work, then I can say U equals X to the power four. DV equals uh um. X cu- yeah, yeah, this this DV will be five plus three X to the four X cubed DX. Uh DU equals four X cubed, and now this I can integrate with just a use up. Right, this is just a use up question. I can just say U equals, well, I don't wanna say U, so T equals five plus three X to the four. DT equals um. It would be uh twelve X cubed DX, okay, I can do that, so V equals.
Your cameras annoying.
Ah. I do that, I do that often. Uh let me actually write this on the side here, just so we can uh fully see what's going on, so this is going to be the integral of. Five plus three X to the four. X squared DX, so I, I'll move my, I'll do it like properly, not just. Quickly writing, so I'll put this as my T substitution. So the next part is going to be, this is gonna be the integral of root T. And um it's a, that's a cubed, it's a cube there, yeah. So it's going to be one twelfth DT. Okay, can do that, one twelfth, uh the integral of. Root T is going to be T uh two thirds times T to the three halves. Um plus C, but it doesn't matter. It's okay, um and so it's gonna be um. One over eighteen, uh T was, what was T? What did I say T was, five plus three X to the four. So five plus three X to the four to the power of three halves. Okay, there's our V. So that actually worked, that that worked. Because uh look at what we have as the answer. So UV. Okay, well, let's see if it actually worked, but. Looks like it should work. X to the four times V, so one over eighteen. Times five plus three X to the four. Times three halves minus the integral of um. Uh VDU. So V is gonna be four X to the power. Uh, VDU, so V is gonna be four x to the power three, and DU is going to be, so, over eighteen. Four over eighteen. X cubed, times five plus three x to the four, times three over two dx. Um, and is this simpler than this? Uh, yes, because that power went down, right, that power went down there. Right, uh, and actually, this is just a u sub question again, never mind. So, not only did the power go down, and that shows us that it's simpler, it's actually just a u sub, so we can just do it, five plus three x to the four. Uh, three halves, minus, that'll be two ninths, um, and I'll just do integral, I'll just write it again. Five plus three x to the four, three halves dx, all I did there was I just, I really could have done that on one line, I don't know why I did it twice, but, it's fine. Um, so I'm gonna say t equals, um, five plus three x to the four. Uh, dt equals twelve x cubed dx, and I can just do the u sub now, so it's going to be. One eighteenth x to the power four, five plus three x to the power four, to the power three halves. Minus two ninths, times the, um, times the integral of. One twelfth, the integral of. Yeah, t to the power three halves dt. And now it's just power function. Right, so this is just going to be. One eighteenth x to the power four, five plus three x to the four, times three halves. Minus, um, nine times. Six is seventy, no, nine times six is fifty-four, yes, yes, fifty-four, uh, so minus one over fifty-four. Times. Two fifths, t to the five halves, plus c, uh, so here, this can, uh, this can be, um. Fifty-four divided by two, times five, so one thirty-five, so it's going to be. One eighteenth x to the four, times five plus three x to the four, to the three halves. Minus one over one thirty-five, times. Five plus three x, to the power of five halves, plus c. Is that the answer?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, good.
So that, that might be something that we get on the, oh, not exactly, but like something similar, because we had two.
It wasn't like that crazy, just like a lot of writing, but, uh, yeah, that, that, that actually makes a lot of sense, because. We wanna, we wanna be able to use up, right, that's the, like, that'll be really simple if we could use up, so what would let us do it, well, if there was an x cubed out there. Right, there was an x cubed next to the dx, okay, we can do that, the rest of it would just be our, um, D, our, our u. Um, okay, any questions about this question?
I've got a question about the quiz.
Yeah?
Are we uploading, or are they multiple choice?
Uh, multiple, well, I shouldn't be so certain, but, I, no, no, sorry, the test I think is, is writing, the test that we have tomorrow is in writing, the quiz is multiple choice.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Two other people were gonna say something at the same time, so. Go for it.
Uh, no, I think. I'm just looking at the, 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 the first integration by parts that we do. Here the four.
Should go up a little bit, see, my face isn't in the way.
All right, x to the three is, is part of the DV, okay.
Yeah. So I have to, I have to remember where my camera is, yeah.
Uh. Uh, could I just take a quick, uh, picture of the answer?
Of the answer, yeah, yeah, the answer's at the bottom. The whole question's on screen now, so you can take a picture of the whole thing. My mouse stopped moving.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem, no problem, there you go, my mouse just stopped moving for a second, this is an old, very old mouse, so, probably what it is, but yeah. Um, is this person asking me, how far along am I? Uh, who's it? No, I don't think they're asking me. Okay. Um, so, there's another problem here, so let's go ahead and do that one. Um, so, uh, chat question. Right, so this is, um, the integral of x cubed e to the x squared. Over x squared plus one squared dx. Hmm, okay, okay. And again, this is supposed to be a, uh, just to be clear, this is supposed to be a, uh, integration by parts question.
Yeah, just to help you out, so we don't mess up again, uh, the cube is, uh, split up into x squared. Um, and the x is left in the denominator, and you move everything else, uh, on the other side.
In the denominator or the numerator?
Or sorry, the numerator, so the numerator, you, you split it up, and then the x is left up.
The x is gonna be.
Like x over x squared plus one squared, and then that's your fraction, and then you split the other part out.
So, okay, here, I'll make my u DV, um, I can tell my u is gonna be.
So your u is x squared e to the x squared.
Take the derivative of that, okay, let's say x squared, e to the x squared, and my DV would be x over. Um, x squared plus one squared dx. Um, let me think, let me try to think about y, okay, if I take the derivative of this, well, that'll be something, something kinda complicated. Though something might cancel there, I don't know, if I take the integral of this, how do I take the integral of that? Or just a u sub? That's just a u sub, so I guess that's, maybe that's a good way to think about it, like, the, you're, if you see something really complicated like this, try to make your. Try to make your DV something that you can just do a u sub for, right? So, uh, I'll have to take the derivative of this, a derivative of the first one, times the second one, plus the first one, times the derivative of the second one. Times the derivative up top, which is, uh, two x. Um, so in better terms, that's going to be, uh, two x cubed e to the x squared. Plus two xe to the x squared, and then here I can just say t equals x squared plus one. Um, so this is gonna be the integral of, uh, well, sorry, and dt, sorry, camera's in the way, isn't it? Um, dt equals, um, two x, so it's going to be. Two x, yep, so it's going to be, uh, one half. Times the integral of one over t squared dt, one half times, um, so it's, uh. It'll be negative two, so add one to that, it'll be negative one, so, um, times one over negative one, it's just times negative one. T to the, well, one over t. Yeah, so neg- negative, negative one over t. Um, okay, there's that, so then that's our V, so now we can put the formula in, so it's gonna be. Uh, VU, so one half, negative a half, one over t. Oh, no, sorry, I can't, I have to put the t, I have to put the, uh, t back in, x squared plus one. So, one over negative two, x squared plus one. Yep, that's good, so, um. This is going to be, color it properly, that's my V. Um, that's my DV. That's my u. That's my D, okay, so it's going to be, D. So, um, uh, VU, so it's going to be negative one half, negative one over. X squared plus one. Uh, times, well, I guess on the top, I'll just put it, x squared e to the x squared. Um, minus the integral of, uh, VDU, so, um. The twos will all cancel, so it's just going to be integral, and then the negative can come out. So it's just going to be x cubed e to the x squared over x squared plus one. Integrate that, dx, well, yeah, dx. Plus the integral of x e to the x squared over x squared plus one. DX, okay. Um, let's see, top one, I mean, right one, is a u sub. This one is. Not a u sub, did I lose the power on the bottom? Yeah, I guess I did, yeah. Okay, let's try for the u sub for this one, so t equals x squared, dt equals two x dx. So this is gonna, I'm gonna leave that middle one for now, I don't know how to do that one just yet, so. X squared e to the x squared over two x squared plus one. Plus integral of x cubed e to the x squared over x squared plus one. DX, and this one is going to be.
Middle one is a second integration by parts of the same thing that you put before.
Yeah, looks like it, yes, so this is gonna be e to the t over t plus one dt. Uh, ddt, sorry, not dx, dt, um, and now. E to the t, for one plus t. Um. Um. How do I integrate that, just by parts again? DV. Derivative of that doesn't get any simpler, I take the antiderivative. Yeah, okay, so let's deal with this integral first, cuz I like it better, so u equals e to the t. DV equals one over t plus one. Because the reason that works is because DU doesn't get any more complicated.
Okay, so you, you took a long way for something, you split up the two integrals when you could have, uh, canceled the denominator out.
Um, let's see how though, cuz it would be x.
Your, your common factor is, um, two x e to the x squared. And then you're left with x squared plus one. If you go to the DU, you have. You're left with x plus one.
Two x, so factor that out, so it's gonna be, uh, uh, x. Yeah, sorry, so that to be, two x e to the x squared, so it's gonna be, um, x squared plus one, ah. Yes, that will be a lot easier, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, well, I guess I'm erasing some stuff now, uh, this, notably. Yes, yes, okay, I'm erasing all this. Well, it's gonna, it's gonna be less time to, yes, it's worth it to erase all this, that's gonna be significantly, significantly faster. Um, so, this is gone, that is still our V, this is gone, so now. Minus, we're back up here, uv is right, that's uv, minus VDU. So the minus comes out. Um, we still divide by two, so it's going to be xe to the x squared. X squared plus one over x squared plus one, dx. Well, would you look at that? Negative x squared e to the x squared over two x squared plus one. Plus the integral of xe to the x squared, dx. This is just a t equals, uh, x squared, d, uh, dt equals two x d, dx. So I'll just say, this is negative x squared e to the x squared over two. X squared plus one, plus integral e to the t, one half integral e to the t, dt. Equals negative x squared e to the x squared over two. X squared plus one, plus one half e to the t, plus c, e to the x squared, plus c. And there's, is that right?
Yeah, that's right.
So there you go.
Oh, yeah.
Helps a lot, that when you factor that out, you get that factor there, right, x squared plus one, and that's the denominator.
Yeah. That would have been a long.
It would have been, it would have been another two integration by parts, if I didn't do that, it would have been another, whole two integration by parts. Right, so yeah.
I think there might be one more, but I'm not hundred percent sure.
Wait, hold on, can you scroll up for a second?
Yeah. Um. Sorry, it's messy.
Somehow for the, the term on the left at the very bottom, I got x squared plus, or negative x squared plus one. Times x squared e to the x to the two, all over two, instead of.
For V?
No, 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 for like, the, the final answer, I just noticed now, I don't know where I went wrong, I must have done.
Oh, like, all the way at the end here, this, this here?
Yeah, that term on the left, uh, I've got the exact same thing, except my x squared plus one is at the top.
Oh. Okay, let's see how I did, but I mean, is this the answer in the book, or in whatever problem set you're getting this from?
Yeah, yeah, that is the answer.
Okay, then I'll just, uh, relook my answer then.
Yeah, yeah, look through it, see, and if you have trouble finding the, the problem, then you can send it to me, I can look through it too.
You might have multiplied them wrong.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah. Okay, um, so there's that question, anything else, any other ones?
Uh, if you got time, there's one that looks deceptively easy, and it's not.
Okay, sure, yeah, yeah.
Alright, just throw it in.
And this will probably be my last one for today, okay?
Alright.
So, number twenty-two chat. Question. Integral of e to the x cos x dx. Well, uh, this looks like it's gonna be this, well, let's, let's see what happens, um. Looks like I wanna do integration by parts twice, and I don't think it particularly even matters, what I choose for. This, yeah, I don't actually, I don't think it would matter at all, but, let's just do it, so u equals this, DV equals cos x dx. Um, uh, DU equals e to the x dx, V equals nega- uh, no, just, just sine x. No. Derivative, yeah, that's right, that, that's good, um, so then I can do integration by parts, so it's gonna be e to the x, sine x. Minus the integral of e to the x, sine x dx. Gonna do integration by parts one more time, so it's gonna be u equals e to the x. Uh, DV equals sine x dx. DU equals e to the x dx, V equals negative cos x. So this is going to be e to the x, sine x, minus, uh, negative cos x e to the x. Minus the integral of, um, uh, e to the x, cos x dx. Which becomes integral of e to the x, cos x dx. Equals e to the x, sine x, plus cos x e to the x. Minus integral e to the x, cos x dx. Add integral e to the x, cos x on both sides, two integral e to the x, cos x dx. Equals e to the x, sine x, plus e to the x, cos x. So the integral e to the x, cos x dx equals one half e to the x. Sine x plus one half e to the x, cos x, plus c.
Yeah.
And there you go.
Alright, well, thanks.
No problem, that one was another one of those, you go in circles, right, so you get, and I, I, I think, I'm not, I'm not gonna do it, but I think. I could have chosen any, I think I could have chosen u equals sine x, I think it would work too, cuz you're just. Right, doesn't actually matter, cuz they're both, like, special kinds of functions that act weird, right, e to the x is e to the x.
When do you know which to choose, like u and which to choose DV?
Uh, u, when you differentiate u, should get simpler, right, this should get, when you differentiate u, should get simpler. Simpler by doing the. Simpler by doing the derivative, and the uh, this, this one here, right, the DV. Should either stay the same or ideally get simpler. Simpler by integrating, and if it's a really complicated thing, you should be able to integrate.
Nice.
By U sub, right, you're kind of going for that, if it's a really complicated thing, try to figure out how you can choose a DV so that you can integrate by U sub.
Okay.
Right, and then that's that's, that's my best advice. Okay, yeah, so if there's any other questions, then just let me know, but that's all the uh, questions we'll do for today. Like all the all the actual full questions I'll do for today, uh, I have another one of these Thursday next week at six o'clock. Might change the time, so look at, look at tutor announcements, but let's just say six o'clock for now. If I do, it'll be in tutor announcements. Um. So yeah, take a look there, but yeah, other than that, that's everything for today. Thanks here, thank you everybody for coming.
Thank you too.
Of course, for sure. For sure, good luck on the test tomorrow, it's one question, so should be okay. Should be alright. Have a good night, everybody, no problem, have a good night.
Have a good night too, bye.
Yeah.